1.0, call to order. Mr. Andre.
He's excused.
Ms. Carvajal.
Here.
Mr. Jean Greco.
Here.
Mrs. Grover.
Here.
Mr. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. McCall.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Here.
Mr. Robley.
Here.
Mrs. Soules.
Here.
Hello, everybody. I just want to say thank you for coming. You guys are part of the Cool Cats at Casey Park?
Yeah.
So what's it mean to be a Casey Park Cool Cat? Can somebody tell me or tell everybody?
Well, basically what we do is we do a lot of projects to help other people. We do charities.
We do raffles.
Yeah, such as like...
We were recently doing a St. Jude's doggies program, so we're raising money to help that kids with cancer get to have like, have a real life kind of thing with dogs and heal the experienced pets in the hospital.
We've also done like a pet pantry and a people pantry where people could donate food for animals and for people.
Anything else or is that... That's a lot. Great job.
We also did a... a donor fund for Mercy to help high school students.
Oh, awesome. Is that for all the grades for new students or just...
Yes.
Yeah, very nice. Sounds like you guys do a lot and probably have a lot of fun doing it, right?
Yeah.
All right, well, if you could just do me a favor, if you could look into the camera and say your name and maybe what grade you're in and we'll start down here.
My name is Nikea Richardson. I'm in fourth grade, Mrs. Oz's class.
Thank you for coming.
My name is Megan Fuller and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Gabrielle Luntini and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Kayden Perry and I'm sixth grade.
My name's Hannah Glono. I'm sixth grade, Mrs. Oz's class.
My name is Maddox Schrader and I'm in fourth grade, Missy Mills' class.
I'm Alicia Freeman and fourth grade, Miss Amato's class.
I'm Avery Zink and I'm in Mrs. Oz's fourth grade class.
Wow. Let's go. Well, thank you very much for coming. Do you have anything else to say about them? Mr. Gorney?
I think that they do great public service work. It is a foundation of a character education plan and we just hope it catches on to more kids and the students, other students at Casey Park, watch what these leaders are doing and take their example and begin to lead also. So I really appreciate what they do. They help out a lot.
Thank you very much for all of your... Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
2.0, approval of the agenda.
Do you have a motion? Moved by Amanda, seconded by Kathy. Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, carried.
3.0, minutes of previous meeting.
Do you have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Andy.
Second.
Seconded by Sam. Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, carried.
I'm going to abstain because I left our list in here for us.
Seven ayes, one abstain.
4.0, superintendent's reports. 4.2, school comprehensive education plan, Casey Park Elementary School. Mr. Gorney.
Good evening, Mr. Gorney.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to... for the opportunity you're giving us to talk about our SET plan for Casey Park Elementary School. I really appreciate the time and share... I'll talk about the process a little bit. We'll talk about some recommendations and you know exactly what this plan looks like and hopefully I'll be able to answer your questions when all is said and done. Just, are we ready to go here or... I'll go down to make it a little bigger for everybody. So, we were asked to highlight a few of the tenants in our SET plan, our six altogether, of course. So I chose to highlight tenant three and you can see that the first major recommendation from tenant three is to adhere to a rigorous curriculum containing clear cohesive units of study which will help us fully implement the CCLs for grades K through six. All teachers will routinely participate in grade level meetings in order to examine practices, materials, and methodology that directly improve the implementation of the CCLs. Opportunities for vertical collaboration will be made possible with a focus on the instructional delivery of the CCLs. Additional instruction opportunities will be created by Casey Park Elementary staff utilizing teacher opportunities and technology other than core subject areas to promote 21st century skills. And student performance data will be collected utilizing a variety of research methods, instruments, and methodologies. This data will inform the planning and implementation of instruction to positively impact academic achievement for all students. Some of these things come easy and when we're talking about things like all teachers will routinely participate in grade level meetings, the schedule does adhere to that. Some of these things we will find more challenging and because there are things that we need to do, actually one of the things, one of the bigger challenges is that vertical collaboration piece. And it's a challenge because simply it's difficult to find the time to meet. Not, it's easy to find the time to meet across the grade level. Finding the time and opportunities to meet vertically is more of a challenge. And that's, of course, in the end here, we'll ask you to, I'll identify ways you can support us and that really is one of our largest challenges. I do try to create the time in faculty meetings and we've been allotted time during superintendent's conference days to meet vertically. Having those, just even those three hours at the end of those superintendent's conference days, that's precious. That's precious to teachers. I brought behind every great principal, there's a great second grade teacher, there's one right there. That's Cindy, I'd like to introduce Cindy Yale. She's here to talk about our supply list, but Cindy, I don't know if you have anything to add to what I'm talking about as far as time to collaborate?
As you said, Ron also allows us, gives us a time during staff meetings. Sometimes it's only half an hour, but even again, that half hour can be precious. He will break us up into groups of one teacher, one K, one grade one, one grade two, and give us that time so that you get to see the grade above, the grade below, sometimes those, knowing those incoming expectations, those outgoing expectations. Give you just a glimpse of what those teachers would like to see a student coming in with, going out with. And again, 15 minutes can give you a huge glimmer. Sometimes you get stuck in the mode of what does your child need. It's nice to see that incoming, outgoing. As Ron said, he gives us time within our grade level. We've done the data inquiry teams once a month. That allows us to look at just the data within our grade levels too. And it's nice to see from month to month where the kids are growing. So we are given time. Everybody wants more time.
That's what they ask for. As a matter of fact, when you ask a teacher, you know, what do you need? What could enhance your practice? They will tell you time to collaborate, time to plan. Whenever we do a needs assessment type exercise, teachers will say, what do you need more? They'll say, we need more time to collaborate, time to plan. Faculty meetings are a fantastic opportunity to do that. If we can make the time, we'll certainly do that. But those superintendent's conference days, that time to get together even if it's informal and really start to talk back and forth from teacher to teacher, level to level, is that, that's critical. Cindy also mentioned the data inquiry teams and that's in the fourth recommendation. I have to tell you that the, having Jorin Cook and Amy Mahunick participate and lead those efforts have really paid off. When you see the work they do and when they look at each assessment piece, whether or not it's, and really analyze and break down the growth of the children, they do, they build what's called the data wall. And if you look at the data walls from the beginning of the year to the mid-year assessment and now we're moving into the second half of the year, and it's, sometimes it feels like it's that you're pounding your head against the wall and you're really wondering, are these kids moving? What are our influences doing? Are we making a difference? When the teachers actually see the data walls, when Amy constructs the data walls with these teachers, they really, you can really see the growth in these kids because each child is on the wall and you can see the child move from reading level to reading level to reading level. And that's, and it really pays off in an intrinsic way when, if I'm a first grade teacher and I have a student that's starting at an A and now I have that student at a C or even a B within a half a year, they moved one reading level. That pays off and that pays off with teacher morale, that teacher feels like they are making a difference. And indeed they are because this is real data and you can see, and it's all facilitated by the reading coach, but you can see these kids move. And certainly having Jorin and Amy lead those efforts, that's been fantastic and I just want to tell you the value those coaches have on our staff. So, thank you very much for that. Obviously here we have the school goals and I will move on to the second slide. Implementation of CCLs, we talked about that. The modules, of course, they've been huge. They, the modules exist in third, fourth, and fifth grade and we started, we voluntarily began those modules last year. We have full buy-in. Teachers love them, kids love them. A lot of copying and things like that, but the modules have been working out for us. Springboard math, of course, that's, or springboard Mymath, springboard's up in the sixth grade. Mymath, of course, has been a, I'd say that implementation of that program has gone pretty well. Cindy, I don't know if you can speak to that or not, but I'm pretty psyched about Mymath.
I'm open to coming this way because I was asked to.
That's okay.
We have used the Mymath and I think the Mymath has worked out really well for most kids. They like the color, they like the newness of it, they like the progression and I think the teachers like the progression. They like the way things are introduced slowly, one at a time, and it seems to be in a way that the children can understand it. We're liking it better than what we had. I don't know that it's perfect yet. There are some times that we will stop and instead of one lesson once a day, we will take two days to introduce the lesson, to complete a lesson. But I think slowing down, modifying and adjusting, being flexible, sometimes is what's needed and that's okay.
We've been pretty, there's been a lot of fidelity to the pacing though.
Absolutely.
And I think if you talk with your colleagues across the schools, we're still at the same pace.
We are within a week or two, I think is what we decided when we met as a math circle. I don't think anybody was way ahead or anybody was far behind, but knowing that some of your children or your class might need an extra day for one or two, but we are finding that we're all pretty close to what the scope and sequence was. So Mymath, I think, is working.
So if we look at the school goals, obviously we are quite aligned with the CCLs. Teachers do have opportunities to collaborate and there's always room for improvement there. We'll certainly move towards that. And again, we're working on providing those opportunities for vertical and horizontal collaboration through those district grade level meetings, data inquiry days which have been huge for us. You know, the time allotted in the faculty meeting and the release time, that's been fantastic. And to that release time, I do want to add that just having subs come into the building to give the teachers a spell, to get out of their classroom, to meet with their colleagues, that, even that time has been, A, it's been useful and we're seeing, we're seeing a difference, we're seeing movement as a result of those teachers being able to sit down and really pour over that data. Of course, you're familiar with the divvles, the baseline screeners, running records, all those things, and that's the data that we pour into those meetings. We'll move on to that next recommendation and that's the tenant four. I took three, two tenants from here, from the SET plan, of course, tenant three and tenant four. All CCLs aligned lesson plans, instructional practices, as well as student goals will be informed by formative and summative data. These plans and goals will meet the needs of all learners in the content area. Of course, we're talking about the data I've mentioned before, we're looking at that and then we're taking, we're actually taking the raw data, we're analyzing it, and now we're building instruction. We are designing our interventions that are going to be, that's the ground level stuff. That's where the rubber meets the road, that's the actual instruction. And this is a system, we've been going, we've been dealing with this since the inception of the CIA plan. It used to be, you know, this, these used to be buzzwords, they're not buzzwords anymore. We've been doing it for six or seven years and really looking at data, collaboration, data analysis, all that stuff, we're living it. It's our behavior now, it's part of the culture and it's not anything new. It works, the stuff works. Of course, the goals for tenant four. Teachers will use instructional practices, strategies organized around material units and daily lesson plans to meet established student goals and promote high levels of student engagement inquiry. Of course, we're taking that data and building those things. Curriculum basis, you can see the activities align with the goals, we have the assessments, measurement of data. Teachers will use research-based instruction, of course, driven by the data and, well, there it is. So it's, you know, what we're doing, it's now a habit and it's part of the culture and we hope to see, we hope to see the results. What can you do to help? Well, of course, having good PD really helps a lot, okay? Again, when teachers are asked, what do you need? They'll talk about that. They'll talk about the professional development and they need to learn more about strategies aligned with the Common Core learning standards. Of course, again, we need that release time. Release time does cost money and we get that. Providing those subs, providing people to move into the classroom while teachers are out collaborating, that's, you know, that is, we understand that's money, but it certainly is money well spent. Having opportunities to meet during superintendent's conference days and other, in other ways, that's fantastic. They ask for more of that. And of course, having upgraded instructional technologies will help promote 21st century skills. It's funny because in the faculty, in the last faculty meeting, Tim Moons there and I brought it up and like five hands went up and they said, what'd they say, Tim? Ceiling monitor projectors, technology, instructional technology. It does, it's, you know, it's not like, you know, if it's there, they use it, there's no doubt about it. And, you know, having access to that, not only that, that technology supports all the new curriculum material that are coming out. Any new material, it's all, it's all web-based, the resources, we need that, we need those platforms to really be effective with the new curriculum material. Do you have any questions?
Ron, I have a question.
Sure.
I've heard you mention teachers engaging in the use of instructional, research-based, evidence-based instructional strategies. Have you, in your observations of teachers or in their observations of one another's in their grade level meetings, have they discussed any particular instructional strategies that they have felt that students benefit from greatly?
I'm going to turn that one over. I have a teacher right here. If you mind, I'd like to defer to Cindy.
Sort of, you know, like an aha moment when you're sharing with teachers or, you know...
One of the things that we've noticed works really well, you know that we use the Words Their Way spelling assessment. It takes spelling and it follows it right from early spelling patterns through to inflected endings and whatnot. We use that Johnny-on-the-spot early in September and we find out where the kids are in their growth of spelling acquisition. From that, we design our word work center based on are they short vowels, are they long vowels, are they all the way up to inflected endings? In our co-taught second grade classroom, that's our spelling lists. You know, for those short vowel kids, that's where they are. Their spelling list is based on short vowels. When they're at word work, they're working on making words with short vowels. When the inflected ending kids come, they're working on words that have inflected endings. They're writing sentences with inflected endings. When we test them again in the fall or spring, they've mastered those new ones. There's an aha moment for me. We didn't have that early on, at least when I started 20 years ago. Everybody did short vowels in the beginning of the year, everybody did long vowels. We were missing an opportunity with those that were working on inflect, or should have been, working on inflected endings in September. They didn't need those short vowels. They'd learned them in kindergarten. So we're differentiating instruction right from day one. We have an assessment, we know where they are, we know where we need to take them and move them on.
Thank you.
There's no way I could have given that answer.
(laughing).
So I'm glad I brought her along. Any other questions Cindy can answer for you? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Am I up again or...
I think you might be.
Yeah. So let me just, yeah, Ron, you're up again. Thank you. You can stay at the podium, thank you.
I'll stay right at the podium. Cindy's here to help me with this one too.
Good, good. I asked Ron and he graciously accepted at the beginning of the year to form a committee district-wide, K6, to take a look at actually all of the supply lists that exist in our district after receiving feedback during our listening sessions from many community members and many other opportunities where parents were calling, teachers, you know, principals, assistant superintendents, et cetera. And we collected information that really provoked us to put together a district-wide committee to take a look at these districts' supply lists because they varied widely across schools, across grade levels. There were some things on the list really that should not have been on the list and other things that perhaps could be on the list that we might want to present as optional. And so Ron took up the charge to put this committee together for us and take a look at promoting a more equitable district's supply list across grade levels across the five elementary schools. So he's going to talk about that process and may share an example of a particular list from a specific grade level that has been agreed upon by all five elementary schools across the district. One of the things that is going to be very useful, I think, in having these lists available early on is that I heard parents say, you know, we really want to have these in the stores that we frequent locally. We want to have them displayed so that when the sale time comes, you know, we can be ready to purchase, we can have a better understanding of what we need to buy in terms of core supplies. And I will say that we understand, the committee understands, that there will be things that aren't on this core list that some teachers might require for a specific team or for a specific project. And we will also have that disclaimer on the list so that parents understand that it is not an exhaustive list, it is a list of core supplies. So with that, Ron, I'll lead into you and help us understand the process.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to, I've just mentioned the committee members' names. We have Cindy Yale who's standing here to my left, Beth Libertor, Katie Naples, Kathy Portlow, Catherine Germanera, Laura Pasarchik, Meg Messina, Michael Sani, Steph Ryan, Ian Nick Musso. We've had representation from every building and when we, when Mrs. Evelyn first described this charge to me, I thought, oh, that sounds pretty easy.
(laughing).
Right now, it's not as easy as it sounds. And I was thinking, yeah, yeah, we'll wrap this up in two, three meetings, right?
Name that too.
Well, we're still at it. You do have, do you have the copies in your board packets? You know, right now, I think we have a pretty solid foundation for what we've done and, well, let me start from the beginning. What I had teachers do was to query their colleagues and sort of, you know, give me examples of each list. Now, this is just our kindergarten examples. They, you know, some teachers are getting kind of creative and what you have is, every list was different, okay? So obviously there was a need. You know, if you got ahold of someone else's list, sometimes parents, you know, text each other, hey, you got the kindergarten list? And my wife doesn't, she's, you know, everyone's texting and trying to, but you know what? If you text someone and they give you the wrong list, you're kind of, you know, you're in a little trouble there. So obviously there was a need and I can see where the confusion and concern was coming from. So we took a look at the list and we basically developed this base core list for each, for each grade level. And even that took some doing because we sat down, we sat down as teams and we poured over each list and every delegate from each grade level was assigned each list and then they, what they did is they built what they felt were the common items from those lists and then, you know, basically they moved that data to me. I, with the help of my secretary, I built each list and then we, and then it became, you know, we'd reconvene and we'd take a look at the list and make modifications and things like that. But, you know, again, and there was some debate and, you know, what if, and certainly there are, even in different buildings, teams have different, or even teachers have different styles, they may engage in different projects and things like that that require special materials. And certainly from building to building, the second grade, one second grade team may be engaging in some kind of project where they're going to require some materials and in another building, you've got a second grade team that will, you know, have some other things. But there are some commonalities, obviously. Glue sticks, pencils, you know, composite, composition notebooks, things of that nature that need to be on that, on that core list. Cindy took part in the committee, maybe she could offer some reflections also.
Well, there was some discussion about, you know, some teachers want white glue, some only want glue sticks. Some want to store things, so you know, send in six packages of pencils. Some don't have room to store, only send in two, we'll ask for more mid-year. So, you know, there became quite a discussion. It didn't wind up being two meetings, it wound up being four.
And a lot of emails.
Ron took the list, he massaged it, gave it back to us and we went, what'd you do?
Some materials should have been on MSDS list for hazardous materials.
There was that discussion.
That's no, that's, you think we're kidding? No. I mean, Clorox wipes, whops. You know, what are you using those for?
Can't they be on there?
No, no, they can't. Those can't, okay? That's a, you know, that's material that, you know, who knows what's going to happen? Yeah, or something like that, you know? Baby wipes are popular, believe it or not. You know, so, and I could see that and I could see that in a kindergarten, you know, but you know, those are things that, you know, the district isn't buying or should the district be responsible for buying baby wipes, you know? Kleenex, that's something that, A, I'd like the buildings to purchase and if we run out, then, you know, that should be something that's on what's called the contingency list or what do I, let's see what I... or what do I, let's see what I call it here. That's the wish list or optional purpose purchase. Two boxes of tissues, wet wipes, hand sanitizer, any brand. Those are very popular items in a classroom nowadays. But those are something that, you know, is that something that we should be asking parents to buy? We're leaving those purchases up to the parents, whether or not they want to do that or not. Certainly, we would not put that on a parent to supply those materials. So, right now, we have a pretty good foundation. I think we'll just go back and massage this list a little more and then offer caveats in the end per team, whether or not there will be room there for a particular team or a teacher to add things onto their wish list. And hopefully, there'll be some equity and hopefully, that'll help the communication and we'll get these lists out to the merchants. So, it eliminates any confusion. And if a parent goes to, you know, a Dollar Tree or a Walmart or, you know, anywhere else where there's school supplies, they can see the, a core list and really have a good jump on things. And if they show up with that core list, that should be sufficient, right? There's certainly enough materials there to get a student through the school year. And so, that's where we're at.
Thank you, Ron.
Questions?
Any questions?
I just want to say, this is going to be, this is a very, could take a good step for this. The NAACP for the past, since 2007, we've been doing school supplies.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we hear this from all the parents, "Oh, I wish we had a universal." And for us, it's been pretty crazy trying to figure out from other, because we're doing Cuyahoga County. And this would be, this is huge. This will help a lot of the families. And at least for us, it'll organize us a little bit better in getting out what is needed.
Helps you know.
So, yeah, it's going to be good, so.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
4.2.1 Board Link Update, Casey Park Elementary School. Mrs. Grover?
I just have a couple of things. First things first, the school looks great. I went into the auditorium, but I haven't been in it since. They've remodeled it and it looks totally different. It's bright. It's cheery. I was just amazed by the difference, differences in there. I had the pleasure of attending a Title I Parent Meeting back in March. Rhonda Zahn was there from Sebar. She gave a presentation about child abuse, more specifically sexual abuse, which was very informative yet scary about the things going on within our community. So, I grabbed, she had a bunch of things out, so I just grabbed a couple of things just to pass around. Things that are going on with Sebar and things that they're doing within the schools to make parents and students more involved. On March 28th at Casey Park, there was a breakfast and a book and kids were able to invite parents, guardians, and adults to come into the school. And I know, Ron, we haven't talked about it, but I know a couple of friends and they said that it was a success. They really enjoyed coming in. Yeah.
It was packed. And even the teachers said, "Wow, it was, you know, it was really well attended." The teachers were really, really happy. They had four classrooms, a lot of engagement there from parents.
Yeah, and the ones I talked to said they had a wonderful time and it was so much fun, you know, being able to get into the classrooms because they don't get in it that often during, you know, the mornings or the days, truly, see what's going on and see all the stuff that's done inside the classroom. So, I know that they really enjoyed that as well. Right now, they're doing a double-day reading incentive. Any kids who read five books by June 1st will get a free ticket to the double-days and a free meal. And one of the students gets to throw out the first pitch at the double-days game on June 20th. And then they'll have other activities for the kids during the day. And if, Ron, I'm speaking out of turn or I have a date wrong, please, please correct me, but it was June 20th.
It is June 20th.
Yep, okay. And hopefully, maybe some of us can attend that game too and support our students. So, our jump ropers were honored at the board accommodation ceremony tonight, so that was great. ELA makeups are this week. And then the first week in May, the math assessments are going to start. Anything?
I think that's it. It did happen pretty well.
No problem.
Is the double-days promotion just something that is happening at Casey Park?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we made a little connection there with the new GM.
Nice to have him in your backyard.
Yeah, certainly. And it was, it was nice. So, we had Abner come to our reading rally and he popped around and we had a couple of guest speakers, including the GM. And we set it all up, so it worked out pretty well for us. And so, we're pretty pumped about it and the kids are too.
Yeah, that's great. That's great.
4.4, 2014-15 Budget Update. Mrs. Green and Ms. Evelyn?
So, we received our revised state aid runs last week after the legislature adopted the budget. We will jump right into that. As expected, we did receive the 1.5 million that we were hoping for an increase in our GEA restoration. And on top of that, we received another 548,000 in GEA restoration. So, a little over 2 million was wiped out of our GEA, our gap elimination adjustment. We also saw $335,000 increase in foundation aid. And the other aid categories, there were some increases and decreases, but overall, a net change of another 135,000. Most of that was in building aid and transportation. And then finally, there was a delay in this interest rate recalibration. This was something that was supposed to go into effect a year ago in the budget and it was postponed. It got delayed by the legislature for one year. So, then it was supposed to happen this year and it got delayed again. So, this is something that in our building aid, we get reimbursement for debt, principal, and interest. And the legislature voted that they would revise, they look at the interest rate average statewide and then that's what they're going to apply to all of the building aid. Instead of, it's not based on what you actually paid for interest. It's going to be based on what the statewide average was. So, if you went, if you have a debt, a bond that you have really high interest rate on, you aren't going to get fully reimbursed from the state for that. So, you really need to look at refinancing and getting lower interest rate. That's what the state's trying to encourage districts to do. So, it was going to cost us about $47,000 in interest that we were going to lose in state aid. But because they've delayed it for another year, it, we will be getting the money this year. However, that causes another problem with our tax levy limit, which I'll get to in a minute. So, overall, our total increased aid was over 2.5 million, close to 2.6 million, more than what was originally proposed with the governor's budget.
And I think that the only thing that I would add is to point out that foundation aid has been frozen in New York State for many years, I think since 2008. Am I right about that?
Well, it's been frozen since 2008, but last year, the legislature did give us a little bit of a bump. Just a little bit.
So, Lisa, this is additional to what was in the governor's budget. The amount that was in the governor's budget, was that part of the assumptions that we built previous budget presentations on?
Well, we assumed, our assumptions were based on receiving the 1.5 million.
Okay, so...
So, there's another million more than that.
Okay, okay. So, the 1.5 we already planned for?
Yes.
It's the other, the other 1 million that is additional that has not been planned for? So, we're really not getting an additional 2.5 from our previous discussions? Really only from our previous discussions, one?
A million more than, yeah.
More than we had planned for? More than we had anticipated earlier. Okay, thank you.
Can you tell, what is our remaining GEA number? They're still cutting us?
It's about a million 60,000. So, we still have about a million, over a million that they're taking away from us. I have a slide on here and that. I'll show you. So, this is our history since it started in 2010. So, over five years, we've had almost $24 million reduced in our state aid. But you can see the last two years, you know, it dropped from almost 6 million to 3 and 1/2 and then this year from 3 and 1/2 down to 1. So, the whole, the entire community's advocacy efforts over the last two years really, really have paid off. So, now going, looking at that change in the interest rate, the delay of that recalibration of the interest rate that gave us additional revenue, along with a couple of other changes that were made between the governor's budget and the legislature's budget that affected our building aid, those two things added together caused our exclusion for, the capital exclusion for the debt limit calculation. So, we talked about the tax levy limit and the formula to get to the limit. And there was a capital exclusion piece of it that allows us to add back to the tax levy what the district's local share is of debt service payments. So, because of this delay in the interest rate recalibration, it had a direct impact on our maximum allowable tax levy. So, where we were, all of our assumptions were based on 1.45% increase in our tax levy. Now, our maximum allowable tax levy is 1.34%. So, it's about a $30,000 reduction in the tax levy. So, that's what, for a simple majority approval of the public vote, 1.34% is the maximum. So, all of our figures have been revised to use that number.
Are there any other remaining issues that could change that again?
Well, I don't, nothing else will change. We had to have this tax levy limit calculation submitted to the state comptroller's office by March 1st. So, obviously, we didn't have these numbers. And last year, we submitted it March 1st and when the governor's budget came out, we didn't do anything with any of the changes. But this year, we got an email last Wednesday or Thursday from Questar, who does our state aid, provides our state aid service, telling us that we needed to go back in and change our formula, our calculation that we submitted to the state comptroller. And we didn't do that last year. So, this year, I took a day or two to verify that indeed, we do need to do that. So, that changed our calculation. So, you know, we got some relief. We got a little bit more money in interest, but it's causing us to lower our tax levy, so we're losing most of it that way. So, this is where, at the last meeting, two weeks ago, our budget gap was $3.8 million. With the 2 and 1/2 million more in state aid, 1 and 1/2 of which we expected, we took the other million and this is our recommendations for what to do with those funds. We feel that there is a strong need for another special ed teacher and an aide at Owosco? Owosco Elementary. We also added another teacher in reserve because we have two teachers in reserve and that's what we had in last year's budget. We used those immediately. They were gone over the summer. So, and we're feeling that we might really need another one at the elementary level. So, we put another teacher in reserve. We also added $200,000 to the operations and maintenance budget. As we had talked about, using some capital project money to purchase some operating equipment. But we felt that this was a better fit. If we can pay for it all at once, rather than having to spread out the cost over five years or so with a bond, this would be a better, better way to pay for that. And we don't get state aid, building aid, on equipment purchases in any event, no matter which funding method we use. And then we had originally increased the budget for professional development because of Common Core. And then when we were trying to balance, we had cut back on the professional development, but we felt strongly that we really needed that, so we did put $20,000 back in for that.
And specifically in terms of professional development, we do have a structure in place right now, in particular, that supports the development of teacher leadership in our leadership and innovation zones. And we would like to be able, for our teachers, to continue to participate in those zones. Because as we know, and evidence-based research supports this, when teachers lead, students achieve their purpose. And we are promoting that kind of leadership across the district. And again, many teachers have participated in the zones over the last couple of years and our students and teachers have benefited from that work. We had a poverty leadership and innovation zone. We had folks come to present to the Board of Education regarding Ryder's Workshop. Those are just two, those are just two examples of the work being born from these leadership and innovation zones. And that's why we felt it was important to resubmit this as part of the budget overhaul.
We also, this June will be the end of our Race to the Top monies, which we had been using for PD for the last three years.
Thank you.
So, those are the additions that we are using. We took a hard look at, I took a hard look at our health insurance, what we had estimated. At the time, we originally put the budget, our preliminary recommendation together, we were seeing about a 12% increase in our health insurance claims. At this point, through February, we're only seeing about a 3% increase. So, I know it can vary wildly from month to month, but I really feel that, you know, we're looking at about a 9% increase in health insurance. So, I reduced the health insurance estimate, 115,000. And that allowed us to, well, let me just go on. The facility rental, the city has agreed to accept a $5,000 flat fee for the use of the ICE for the hockey team. So, that was a reduction of $7,000 that we had put in the budget. Changing our tax levy limit because of that whole interest, building aid, was a $30,000 change. And so, you take all of those changes and then combine it with the 2 and 1/2 million additional state aid and that leaves us with a budget gap of 1.57 million, which is what we will use from our reserves. So, what the additional aid allowed us to do was add a couple of positions more in the budget and then not use, we were expecting or having to use about $750,000 of our fund balance. So, this additional aid will be used to offset that, save that for the future. We won't, we're not recommending now any use of fund balance to balance the budget, just the reserves. So, overall, the budget is up 3.9% from 68.7 million to 71.4 million, a $2.7 million increase. We have one additional special ed position at the elementary schools. On 1.4 regular ed positions, one is in the elementaries. And then the .4 is the additional home and career, increasing the .6 to a full FTE, home and career teacher at the high school. We have six additional aids and then the additional teacher in reserve. Our transportation contract, as we talked about, is up 8.6%. We added the 200,000 for equipment, for operating equipment. And our increased state aid is our 6.3%. And I know the figures that the governor on the aid runs that we got from the legislature in the state show, say that our aid increase is more like a 9% or, it's not the same number. But we aren't using strictly what they say our aid numbers are. I, we know a couple of things that are going to impact our aid numbers and we're anticipating those proactively and adjusting our budget numbers. So, we really are only seeing a 6.3% increase in our state aid. For example, we sold school buses this year for about $170,000. That the state doesn't know about that yet. They won't know until we submit our year-end reports until September. When they find that out, they will reduce our transportation aid by about 80% of that figure. So, I reduced that, knowing that we wouldn't see that aid. These are the expenditures broken out by function and I have a pie chart of it on the next screen. Everything is up a little bit or maybe more than a little bit, except for debt service, which was a relief for us this year. We had a big, a large debt service payment that was paid off and it dropped off our amortization schedule this year. So, overall, a 3.9% increase. You can see the categories, how they make up our total budget. Everything is pretty much the same, except... Everything is pretty much the same, except debt service is down. It was 10.7% last year, 9.3% this year of our total budget. And employee benefits continue to be a large portion of our budget, and they're going up again. Last year, they were 24.6%. This year, 25.4%. So fully, a quarter of our budget is to pay for employee benefits. Our component budget, these are the three components that the state requires us to report. A capital component is all of our debt service payments, plus all of our operating O&M, buildings and grounds expenses, the administrative portion, and the program portion, which is, you know, the instructional. The program portion is up about a percent over last year, and the capital portion is down about a percent. The administrative portion remains the same. So I use the revised state aid figures and our new budget recommendation figures to do a three-year projection. For '14, '15, our expenditures are 1.57 more than our anticipated revenues, so that's how we will close the budget gap this next year by using reserves. The following year, we're still showing a budget gap of 1.5 million. We can use some reserves. We don't really have clear-cut answers on that. We're estimating what the state will do, so we don't have any firm answers on that. In '16, '17, it's a larger gap.
So many things will impact that moving forward, obviously, whether or not they completely eradicate the gap elimination adjustment, and whether or not Auburn schools finally achieves this sort of perpetual classification of high needs, which will afford us more resources at the state.
There's no chance of them redesignating us within this year, this budget year? It'll be a done deal by that point, right?
Well, I think our, what they did to the state aid formula, to the GEA formula, allowed us the revenue as if we were classified as high needs, but it's not a permanent thing. It's the same as last year, just an adjustment to the formula.
I thought that they were going to put in new language so that the needs designation didn't matter anymore. That was the information that we were given from our politician friends.
They, that's kind of what the legislature did, was put that language in. But the problem is then, when the governor does the budget again next year, he's not bound by that. He starts over from scratch. So every year, they have to put it back in when the legislature adopts the budget.
So the manipulation of the gap elimination adjustment formula for Auburn is...
For this year was calculated at a medium needs district?
No.
So it's not related to being average or high needs?
Okay.
It's just a manipulation of the gap elimination adjustment calculation.
Yeah. What happens is, in the first two years of the gap elimination adjustment, or the first three years, no, I think it's just the first two years, the GEA formula was, part of it was predicated on whether you were a high needs or a low needs. But because after, you know, after two years of hearing people say that that wasn't fair, they finally changed it so that your needs category doesn't have anything to do with it anymore. So for the last three years, it hasn't affected us, but because our GEA was so high in the early years, we're still feeling the effects of that, because the amount of your GEA carries over from one year to the next. So in order to get us relief from that, they have to put something in the formula to go back and fix those first two years. It's very...
It's extraordinarily complicated.
It is.
You know, I find it extraordinarily frustrating, and I know that it's not your fault, but I find it extraordinarily frustrating that we, as a small board of education, try so hard to be transparent, and we have to deal with the super-secret formulas that come from the state. And pardon my sarcasm, but that's what we always have to deal with, are those things that are just not transparent. And I find that very frustrating, just for the record. And I know it's not your fault.
So this is a breakdown of our total state aid from last year to this year. The foundation aid, net of the GEA, that's where we see our biggest increase, that's where the GEA restoration is reflected. Building aid is down because we have that debt payment that dropped off, so we would anticipate that our aid will go down as well. Transportation aid is down because of the sale of the buses that we talked about. BOSI's aid is down a little bit. That fluctuates from year to year, and that number will change, I'm sure. That's just in the budget right now, but that won't end up being the actual number. Same with the excess cost aid and the category aids, the textbook, library, and software. Those fluctuate as our enrollment changes and the special needs, the excess cost aid is for the special needs students, and that varies depending on what the students' needs are.
How much on, this is just because I can't remember, how much do we get per student for the textbook aid?
$58.25.
Is that, has that been the same?
It's been the same for as long as I'm aware. I don't, I'm not sure when the last time it increased was. I think we get about $15 for software and $6.25 for library. Other than state aid, our, this is the total revenue picture. This is where you see the 3.9%, the changes in our operating aid and building aid. Other revenues are fairly constant. The tax levy, you see the 1.34%. Transfers from other funds, the debt service fund and the capital project fund. Last year, we always transfer 400,000 from our debt service fund. That helps us offset our debt payments. And then last year, we had 350,000 that we brought in from the capital project fund as capitalized interest. Next year, we are only anticipating 60,000 for capitalized interest. And then fund balance or use of reserves. Last year, we used 1.2 million of fund balance. This year, we're using 1.57 million of reserves. And again, the pie chart, breaking out the categories, very similar to last year. Our state aid, the operating aids and building aid, together are 53% of our budget. So 53% comes from New York State. Last year, that was 49%. So that is good. We're seeing a bigger percentage of our budget financed with state resources. And the tax levy as a percentage of our budget is down about 1% from what it was last year. Now, our projected tax levy at 29 million, it's down about 30,000 from what we were talking about, what we've been talking about up until today. So the 1.34% increase will generate $385,000 in additional property tax revenue. You can see the history, the five-year history of the percentage increases down in the bar graph. This is the smallest percentage increase since 2010. And this slide will show you how this would look for an average homeowner. The 1.34%, assuming a 100% equalization rate, a $50,000 house without any star exemption would see about a $12 increase in their property tax bill next year. And if they had the basic star exemption, which is a $30,000 exemption, they would only see a little over a dollar increase. So we look at the same figures for 100 or $150,000 house. So if you say the average homeowner with $100,000 house with a basic star exemption would see just under a $14 increase in their property tax bill next year. And this is what was included in the governor's budget, that if, as long as we don't exceed that 1.34% tax levy increase, each property owner will see a rebate check from the state for these increases. For the amount that their tax goes up, they will be refunded that amount by New York State, probably just before the election.
Was that just for schools, or did it include...
Yeah, it's all municipalities, I believe. So you, county, town, city.
But are they, like, do they all have to be under...
No, every, everyone is on its own. We stand on our own.
So I can understand this, though. If we were to put out a 2.0 tax levy, right?
We would need a supermajority.
Supermajority, but then...
And then the homeowners would not get...
Would not get.
The rebate.
Okay.
They've pretty much tied our hands. If we did happen to have a contingency budget, we would have to take that $385,000 out of our budget. We could not include any tax levy increase at all. So all of that $385,000 that we have budgeted would have to be cut out of our budget. So whether that would mean using more fund balance reserves or cutting expenditures, that would be something the board would have to decide.
But if we, if we went, and if we went above 1.34, say we did go to a 2% tax increase, tax levy increase, and we didn't get our supermajority, then we could always come back to the 1.34 for a second vote. We would only go to a contingency budget if a third, if the second vote went down.
You could do it after one vote. It's up to the board. But you do have, you can have the public vote twice before you have to go to contingency.
So it wouldn't necessarily be a terrible thing to ask for 2%? It wouldn't be a done deal if it got voted down the first time?
Right. We typically have the public hearing on the budget the week before the vote, and we'll get everything out in the mail about the same time, all of our budget newsletter, and then the vote is on May 20th. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions from anyone?
So we will be asking you to vote on the budget, though, next, at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Five point zero verbal communications, residents wishing to be heard. Any resident of the Auburn and Lawrence City School District is welcome to address the Board of Education on items pertaining to the education and/or the operation of the school district. There will be time provided on the agenda at this point. Any resident wishing to address the Board of Education is requested to come forward to the lectern on being recognized and to give his or her name and address. Questions related to the employees of the district will not be permitted. Such questions should be referred to the superintendent at another time. Residents have been asked to sign in at the lectern and limit their presentation to three minutes or less.
Do we have any residents this evening wishing to be heard? Thank you.
Six point zero committee reports, workshops, meetings. Six point one, report on curriculum and instruction subcommittee meeting held on March 10, 2014. Ms. Carvahal, Mrs. Rhodes, and Mrs. Sols.
We had a meeting on the 10th. It's a long 10th ago.
I was gonna say. We talked about curriculum and instruction.
We did talk about inclusion. I got the minutes, but I don't even know. We talked about inclusion. The one thing that was stated there was that they feel that a lot of enroats have been made to develop better IEP goals, and goals are more in line with classroom expectations and curriculum. Teachers are co-planning in a truer sense, and using their time to review the subject matter. Coming to the meetings prepared to discuss student needs. They also, we're talking about MYMAF and ELA and the modules, and what is most important for students to learn. As Lila said, Race to the Top monies will be gone, so professional development will be limited in that respect. So hopefully, what we're talking about would be, our budget is definitely in need. Talked about grants, Title I and Title II-A, the Community Schools Grant that was just awarded to the district. Race to the Top ends June 30. Competitive Improvement Grant and renewal grants end June of 2015. So there'll be other grants that the district will be applying for. Summer pre-K kindergarten will be offered at Genesee. Breakfast and lunch will be provided for those programs. That program for those students will be open to Casey Park and Seward students also. Busing is not provided for the parents on that. The parents will have to transport the students. But STEP program will be at Casey Park for grades one, two, and three, and students are bused for their program, and they have breakfast and lunch. Students are in a co-teaching group. It's very similar to last year's. We did discuss the music program, can you jump in? They're diagramming something. We did discuss the music program, and Lila provided us some data comparing Auburn's music program to Swiegel and Rome. Auburn offers our students more than what the state requires, according to this data that we saw. The numbers do show an impact on the orchestra. So we will have more information when Lila gets more from the music teachers that she requested. Let's see. That was pretty much it. Other than a very little bit, we discussed about the Seward and Auburn Junior High AIS program a little bit, but we didn't have a lot of information on it. So that is it. Lila? Anything? No?
Thank you.
Six point one point one, minutes of curriculum and instruction subcommittee meeting.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dea.
Seconded.
Seconded by Michael. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
Six point two, report on audit committee meeting held on March 20, 2014. Ms. Carvahal, Mr. Hernandez, and Mr. McCall.
At that meeting, we mostly focused on the proposals that came in for external auditor. We did vote to recommend the Bonadillo Group. We will do that at the reorg meeting. Is that correct? Is that what we decided, that that decision would be made at the reorg?
We do it tonight.
You're voting tonight.
We're doing it tonight. It's 8.3 tonight.
Oh, it's 8.3. I'm sorry. I thought we would do it right here, but we're gonna do it on 8.3. Okay, well, then it's at 8.3 tonight. And that was the majority of what we talked about there. We did do that policy review of 5570, Policy 5570, and we also took the time to look at the Audit Committee bylaws at that, at that meeting. We've actually had another meeting last night, so we did do some follow-up work with those, both of those policies. But you'll get those minutes for next time to approve, and the policy committee can move forward with what they need to. But that's coming in the next Audit Committee meeting, which was last night, but the minutes are not here for approval. Okay, any questions? Anything you want to add?
Nope.
How about you, Michael?
Great job. I think you...
Okay, so that was the last meeting.
Thank you.
Six point two point one, minutes of Audit Committee meeting.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Kathy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Amanda. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying carried.
Six point three, Scholarship Committee for the Charles E. Maine Co. and Alumni Scholarships.
These three scholarships are the ones that the board is in charge of. Many of them have been set up years and years.
Seconded.
Seconded by Amanda. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining carried.
6.3, scholarship committee for the Charles E. Name, Co. and Alumni Scholarships.
These three scholarships are the ones that the board is in charge of. Many of them have been set up years and years ago and have been given to the board for their direction. So Karen has been working on all the applications that have come in, getting them all ready for the committee. So we need a committee of three. I did speak with Andy over the weekend, explained to him about the scholarship committee and the scholarships that we are responsible for, and Andy has already told me he's expressed an interest in being on that committee. So I'm looking for two other people that would like to sit on the committee. Kathy, you want to?
I would like to do it again if no one else is interested. I did allow you. Anybody else?
Okay. Michael? I'm sorry, that's me. I apologize. Just shut it off. Okay, so Andy, Kathy and Michael will be the committee. So we, this needs to be done by the first part of May. So we need to set up a night. If you remember, it takes about three, three and a half hours to go through all the applications and everything. So do you want to take a look at calendars? You want to do it via email and then...
Well, do we know when Karen...
She just said, she said they're working on them already, so to just set a date and let her know and she will be ready. So if you want to wait till after break, maybe the week after break, which would be the week of, like, between the 21st through the 25th, you want to try for a night in there someplace? You want to check your calendars? Remember that week, our board meeting is on Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 23rd is the board meeting. I can't, Monday, the 23rd. Well, we can figure it out.
Okay.
We don't have to waste everybody's time, but the three of us will fit in.
So just CC me on that email so that Karen can, and CC Karen on.
I will.
So that she knows when to have everything ready.
Okay.
Okay.
Dates to remember?
A couple of dates. One, we just mentioned, remember that meeting on April 23rd is a Wednesday that week for board meeting, not Tuesday? And then Andy had a date he wanted to add on?
Yeah, it's actually a whole week. I was contacted by my friend Sue Muldoon from Partnership for Results. They're organizing a 1,000 kid cleanup in Auburn, the week of Earth Day. That's Sunday, the 20th through Saturday, the 26th. Basically, there, there's a group of kids that will go around and clean up some, what they're calling high-impact areas, so neighborhoods, playgrounds, parks. I know they're coming to the museum where I work, so if you're interested in having that group come to your place or a playground near you, she has published her phone number and email address in the newspaper, so you can check with the citizen there. I think, I think that's a good opportunity for the kids to get out there and take part and care about their neighborhoods and their city. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. And also for the public, anyone interested in running for school board packets are available at Thornton Avenue. Just go see there, Loretta Van Horn or Karen Vassil, and they will get you a packet and they will be due back by April 30. And we do have a forum for prospective school board members on Saturday, April 26.
Carol, we might want to just mention also, Karen Vassil just set up the date for our senior citizen luncheon here at the high school. That's going to be on May 6, around 12 o'clock noon. It's a great event. Our senior citizens come in, they have lunch down in the cafeteria, but before that, our bands will get up, jazz band, concert bands, and they will perform some songs for the senior citizens. It's a wonderful, wonderful afternoon. So we invite all the senior citizens to the luncheon here at the high school on May 6, as well as all the board members as well.
What day does that land on, Jeff? You're not...
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Thank you. Always attend that one. It's always a good one. Anyone else for dates to remember? Okay, thank you.
7.0, old business. 7.1, amended 12-month employee calendar for 2014-15 school year.
Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Andy.
Second.
Seconded by Kathy. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining carried.
8.0, financial matters. 8.1, donation.
Do I have a motion?
I'll know.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Seconded by Eli. Discussion. Thank you. Especially lifespan therapies, that is a tremendous donation to Seward Elementary School, $4,000 worth of equipment. Thank you very much. And to Joanne Febrix and Wayne, I don't know how to say the name. Montpetit? Montpetit? Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining carried.
8.2, stipulation of settlements, USDA.
Do I have a motion?
I'll know.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Seconded by Michael. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining carried.
8.3, appointment of external school district auditor.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dea.
Second.
Seconded by Kathy. Discussion.
Can I ask a question? There's a change in this, I believe, from our present carrier?
Yes.
Okay. Is...
In the minutes was a listing of what, it's basically the lowest bidder. Our current firm for external audit, Descendence Testone and Marshall. Did I get it all right?
You got the three names.
I got them all mixed up. They also, they also bidded, they also bid and they came in probably third or fourth from last. They weren't the lowest bid, so, so we strictly went with, with the lowest bid. And those, those numbers are in the audit committee minutes, as well as I could give you the, the form that we use that broke it down over, over three years.
It's a significant amount, isn't it?
Yeah, it was, it was significant.
It was significantly lower.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained, okay. Seven ayes, one abstained.
At this point, the board will consider whether to proceed with consent agenda for items 9.0 through 12.1.
Do I have a motion?
I'll know.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Seconded by Andy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining carried.
Adjournment.
Thank you.